Okay, go ahead and call speed in order. First item is roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Shaker.
Here.
Alderman West.
Okay, next item be, excuse me, invocation by Pastor Darrell Jones, followed by a pledge of allegiance from Alderman Headley.
That's very good. Very God of heaven, you're a God of order, structure, decency, compassion, peace, and unity. And God, if we're gonna take the time in this meeting to call on you, and we're gonna call upon those characteristics and qualities that you have, and that you've invested into our lives, and we're just so very fortunate. Been thinking and reflecting over the last several days about so many people that are so deprived of the luxuries that we have, refugees in refugee camps in South Sudan and other African and Middle Eastern countries, and they would, they would just give anything to have a community like this to invest in, and to have community. God, we have that. We have neighbors, we have friends, we have leaders. And God, we have entrusted to these leaders the opportunity to lead us, and to lead our community, and for our betterment, and for our opportunity to give to others. And so tonight, as, as decisions are made, as decisions are weighed, as elected officials and, and employed members of our, of our city staff work together, and as our residents listen and participate, God, I just pray that their compassion and your unity would reign in this place, in a, in a great and mighty way, and that this community would be a community that sets an example and gives back to communities far greater than even ours. But I just pray that you would make an example of us. And we ask your blessings on all that's done in this room, the people who participate in it, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, united in Christ, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
If there's no changes, move on to the next item, which is proclamations. First one for Pan American Day slash week.
City of Green Valley, Missouri proclamation, whereas on Pan American Day and throughout Pan American Week, the Western Hemisphere annually celebrates a significant anniversary in our shared history. Pan American Day is established by the governments of the American republics as a symbol of their sovereignty and their voluntary union in one hemispheric community, and said day and week are the only ones set apart to honor and celebrate the independent republics of Americas, Canada, USA, Mexico, Central and South America, and the independent nations of the Caribbean. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Green Valley Board of Aldermen and I, Mayor Mike Todd, do hereby proclaim April 14, 2015, as Pan American Day, and the week of April 13 through 18, 2015, and the City of Green Valley as Pan American Week. Signed, Mayor Mike Todd.
Uh, next up then, the act of kindness for Ronald Horton. Is there someone here representing him tonight?
Okay. Well, come on up, I'll just, can we wait a minute? You'd like to read?
Okay, ready?
City of Green Valley, Missouri proclamation, whereas now and then we hear of individuals
performing unsolicited community service and selfless act, acts of kindness that restores our faith in the bonds of community, whereas an example of such selflessness has been consistently demonstrated by Ronald Horton to his neighbors and the residents of Green Valley. Whereas Horton cleans the driveways of neighborhood houses and cul-de-sacs following snow events, mows yards, and dependably works to put the needs of others above his own. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the City of Green Valley Board of Aldermen and I, Mayor Mike Todd, do hereby honor and thank Ronald Horton for his community service in and around Green Valley. Signed this 23rd day of March, 2015, Mike Todd, Mayor.
Did I'm separately correct? First up would be Kevin Bellmeyer. Let me step forward.
Good afternoon, I'm Kevin Bellmeyer.
I'm Kevin Bellmeyer.
I will follow the court.
I follow the court.
That I will support the Constitution.
I support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state and the third.
State and the third.
I will observe the provisions.
I will observe the provisions.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Green Valley.
Of the City of Green Valley.
I will observe the provisions.
I will observe the provisions.
And ordinances. Of the City of Green Valley.
Of the City of Green Valley.
I will officially start all of my meetings.
I will officially start all of my meetings.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Tony Allen Department.
The Tony Allen Department.
So, that'll be done.
That'll be done.
By power vested in me, the City Clerk of the City of Green Valley, I commission you as police officer for the Green Valley District's service on this 23rd day of March, 2015. Congratulations.
Jamie, are you gonna do this, pictures now? Okay. Chief, if he has anyone that would like to come forward and take a picture with him, we'll go ahead and have them come up now. I figured there's young men, dressed in ties there, and need some pictures taken.
Okay, do you want to tell?
Okay. Next up then is Kyle Soul.
I'm Kyle Oliver-Soul.
I'm Kyle Oliver-Soul.
I will follow the court.
I follow the court.
That I will support the Constitution.
I support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state and the third.
And the state and the third.
I will observe the provisions.
I will observe the provisions.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Green Valley.
Of the City of Green Valley.
I will state, please.
I will state, please.
You start all of my meetings.
You start all of my meetings.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the City of Green Valley, Missouri.
Of the City of Green Valley, Missouri.
So, that'll be done.
So, that'll be done.
By power vested in me, as the City Clerk of the City of Green Valley, I commission you as a police officer for the Green Valley District's service on this 23rd day of March, 2015. Congratulations.
Do they wanna come up and get a better shot?
Do you wanna come up and get a better shot? You can go, you can stand out in the middle if you wanna take some better shots too, you're
not off the side there. If you have cameras or phones, clearly they can take them for you if you wanna get some. Go in here and take some.
I'll get it after, I think.
Okay, next item is citizens' participation. Uh, we ask the citizens to step forth to the, uh, the podium and microphone and address the board, and we also ask that you give your name and address for the record. Uh, do we have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
Yeah, I'm Dennis Schraub from Valley Speedway. You've got us on your agenda tonight for a new conditional use permit. You show a first reading, I would ask that you do a first and a second reading, or do a first and, uh, the next meeting is not until we actually start our season this year, which is the 4th of April. So, I don't know, but either if we could have a special meeting for a second meeting, or do two readings tonight, where we can get started out there, uh, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wants to address the board?
My name's Jeanne Brill. I live at 1035 Southwest Ephrim. And, uh, we're coming up on the 30th month, um, since I asked the board to, uh, consider some, uh, regulations concerning payday loans. It's my understanding that that one is being worked on, but it's been coming up on eight weeks since I was told that. I just wondered what was the status on any kind of ordinance for you to vote on.
Uh, we actually heard back from MML, and it looks like the, with us being a fourth-class city, the way to do it is through zoning. Uh, they sent over a couple of examples that actually kinda go and add it into the conditional use section. So, the process will be similar to what we're doing with the overlay district, to where we have a public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission, and then, uh, before the Board of Aldermen. But that looks like the way that we have to go about it.
Do you see that going for P&amp;Z next month, or?
Um, I think the days work out to where that will happen.
Okay, so, probably the April P&amp;Z meeting will be a public hearing for it?
Yeah.
I believe that's, is that the first or second Wednesday? Okay, so the second Wednesday of April, it'll be a planning and zoning meeting, and it should be on for a public hearing at that meeting. Once that board discusses it and approves it and passes it on, they'll come to us then for a public hearing and vote also.
So, is that possibly a public hearing here?
Yes. Uh, it'll be a public here, here, and then that planning and zoning also.
Okay, the second Wednesday is the 15th? And where will that, we need to be?
It's, it's here.
At what time?
Uh, the, seven o'clock still?
I don't, yeah, I don't believe it's the 15th though.
Oh.
The, the second Wednesday is the 15th. It is not the 8th, it's the 15th.
Four?
Oh, it is the 8th.
Yeah, it's the 8th.
I'm sorry.
It's the April 8th, here, seven o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and if something changes, do we have her information?
We do have her contact information.
Something changes, and they don't have it done for that meeting by some reason, they'll contact you and let you know.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wants to address the board?
Uh, my name's Jeff Wood. I live at 900 Foxtown. Um, just in regards to the racetrack, we're pretty far away, and it's pretty loud, and I know the ship has kinda sailed on the, uh, permit, but I, one thing I want you to consider is that the 30-day, um, correction, I don't know where it is, but they have 30, 30 days to correct a problem with permit. It seems like that's an extended amount of time. So, I would just want you to consider when you talk about it that, you know, he can be in violation for 30 days, fix it, be in violation again for 30 days, fix it, and I just don't know how that would reconcile itself. So, I'd like to keep that in mind, and just, okay with the racetrack, just wanted it enforced, and that's it out of hand. But that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wants to address the board? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda.
If we accept the consent agenda?
I have motion of Auburn Scolie to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Auburn Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, next item then is public hearing for downtown overlay district.
Uh, Mayor and Board, we've been working on this for quite some time now. We had, uh, multiple workshops with the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, along with yourselves, and basically what we put, uh, or looking at tonight is, well, we kinda came to the conclusion that were the biggest issues, I guess, after those workshops, um, but basically the changes would be, uh, change in the base zoning district from C1, which is a central business district, to C2, which is general business district. And if you remember the big change with that, C2 allows everything that's in C1, but also allows those auto-related uses, which is one of the things we've heard, uh, over and over. The other proposed change was lot size requirements. Um, if you remember, right now, we have some fairly large lot size requirements, so for the downtown portion, we would go with the current C1 standards, and then the transition zone, we would go to C2. Um, and all of this is in the marked up, uh, piece of paper there. It shows where we're at now and what we're proposing. Um, the third change would be with signs. If you remember, probably three years ago, four years ago, um, it was no internally illuminated signs anywhere within the overlay district, and we made the change for the northern transition zone, which is yanni, um, north, and this proposes to do away with, uh, that restriction on any, uh, property within the overlay district. So internally illuminated signs would be allowed. Um, one of the concerns that was brought up at P&amp;Z was this would allow, you know, blinking, flashing, distractive-type, uh, signs. There's already a provision in the code that would limit that, so basically you can't put something up that's gonna be a nuisance or a danger, uh, so we don't, we don't have to add anything in there for that. But I think you've seen most of this before, so those are the, uh, the changes that staff is proposing.
Okay. Uh, this is a public hearing then, is there anyone here who wishes to speak either for or against any overlay district changes? All right, seeing none then, we'll close the public hearing portion. Does anyone have any questions for Ken? I mean, that's, we can ask him later, it's on your agenda, but, anyone have any questions now?
Ken, uh, you know, the one thing I, I think we overlooked, or I missed, was, uh, we didn't put a number on car lots. We could be the Miracle Mile once again.
Yeah, there is no number on it. This is strictly going, or proposing to go from C1 to C2.
Yeah, I mean, both boards overlooked that. We, we, if we don't put a number on car lots that we can have on Main Street, we're gonna be known as, like I said, the Miracle Mile again.
Well, and I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to lean on Mr. Cook there to maybe give some advice on what's even allowed as far as that goes, with limiting a number like that.
Well, I think it's, it's kinda the same thing on, uh, on any business as far as the impact on traffic, those kinds of issues. Um, I don't know what the, the story, we, we haven't really done anything. So that would, you'd have to look first at, at that question.
I mean, is, is it allowed even in code put, you can have X number of car lots in town, or?
Sure. I, I think we need to, we need to look at that, whether a number of car lots we put downtown. I mean, everything else seems worked, but I think we need to look at that.
I mean, it's not just limited to car lots and those kinds of businesses. You don't wanna target a particular business, but you have to look at the overall impact, just like you do with any development. Uh, traffic, access, safety, crime, those kinds, same things we're talking about with, uh, payday loan or any zoning issue. I mean, I'll be happy to take a look at it with Ken.
We can, we'll look into the vote section, we can discuss that if we need to. Uh, if anyone else has anything for the public hearing portion, we will move on then. Seeing no new business or discussion, we do have a need for an executive session for hiring, firing, and personnel at this point in the agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session. Motion from Alderman Arnold, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
West, Shelley.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Shaker.
Yes.
All right, call speed back to order. Next up are ordinances.
There'll be 15 dash 04, first reading, second reading, or first reading. An ordinance to clarify duplicate numbering of ordinance 2347 by changing bill number 1429 to ordinance 2347A. Second reading, it will be ordinance, excuse me, no, sorry, it will be ordinance 2355.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill 1504 for second reading, making it ordinance 2355. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Auburn Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
West, Shelley.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Shaker.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Bill B-15 dash 05. First reading, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into employment agreement with Ryan Hunt. It's on the agenda for both readings tonight. First reading, bill B-15 dash 05.
Mayor, I move we accept bill B-15 dash 05 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading.
I have a motion from Auburn Headley to accept bill B-15 dash 05 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Auburn Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The man was on the first reading. This will be the second reading. Bill B-15 dash 05, it will be ordinance 2356, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an employment agreement with Ryan Hunt. Second reading, ordinance 2356.
Mayor, I move we accept bill 1505 for its second reading, uh, for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2356.
I have a motion from Auburn Headley to accept bill B-15 dash 05 for its second reading, making it ordinance 2356. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Auburn Johnson. Any discussion?
Uh, I received several phone calls with regards to, uh, why we decided to have this before the election instead of wait until a possible change in the board. Just wanted to make that known.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? All right, seeing none, all fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Arnold.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shaker.
Yes.
05, Mayor. Bill B-15 dash 06, first reading, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a racetrack facility in 348 East Old US Highway. First reading, bill B-15 dash 06.
Mayor, I move that we accept number B-1506 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have a motion from Auburn Shaker to approve bill B-15 dash 06 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Auburn West. Any discussion?
Uh, I received several phone calls with regards to, uh, why we decided to have this before the election instead of wait until a possible change in the board. Just wanted to make that known.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? All right, seeing none, all fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Arnold.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shaker.
Yes.
West, Shelley.
Yes.
05, Mayor. Bill B-15 dash 06, first reading, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a racetrack facility in 348 East Old US Highway. First reading, bill B-15 dash 06.
Mayor, I move that we accept number B-1506 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have a motion from Auburn Shaker to approve bill B-15 dash 06 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Auburn West. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a discussion on the racetrack. Um, I think we need to go back with our citizens, uh, that just stepped up here, Jeff, with the 30 days. I think we need to look at that. That's giving them an awful lot of time. I'd be more willing to see 15 days in, in any violations that he can get fixed.
I don't think, I think you were talking about the sound ordinance, weren't you? Sound ordinance in subject to 30 days. Sound, sound ordinance is subject to penalties, warnings, and penalties for each violation when it occurs. The 30 days is just for structural or code violations.
Can I miss, can I miss the rabbit?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I, I thought you were wanting to change that, 'cause I did have a couple of people that had brought up the 30 days, and there's, there's some other things I'd like to address tonight. Um, Mr. Schraub, can I talk to, is it okay to visit Mr. Schraub?
No, you can ask it, yeah, you can.
You know, I, I, uh, I'm really, really upset with, with the way this is taking place. I mean, I asked you at the last meeting, I said, why, why did we accomplish this in 60 days versus, it took us, what, a year to do this? And you, your con-
It took us seven years.
Well, your comment to me was, your, your CUP got pulled, and your, your feelings basically got hurt, is what, is what your comment was.
I'll stand on it if you'd like to do.
Please.
Whenever this started, two years ago, Mayor told us, we had the Citizens Advisory meeting, he said, go to that meeting, discuss the issues, and then it would go to the zoning board. Well, it didn't go to the zoning board. We had the Citizens Advisory meeting, and it went nowhere. Then we had another meeting, that they appointed a citizens', I'm not sure you calculated what that word was, but they appointed a meeting we had next door, over there. And then after that meeting, it was gonna go to the zoning board, and then some kind of agreement would come out of that. It didn't go to the zoning board after that. Then you passed a proclamation to cancel my CUP, and during that process, the mayor asked several times, if we can come to an agreement before this, we don't have to proceed with the cancellation of the conditional use permit. And Mr. Cook said, yes, that's correct, if you can come up to an agreement. So, I spent a lot of money negotiating basically the same thing we got now, uh, to try to come up with an agreement of, where both of us could, and the citizens, be happy with something, and it was totally ignored and canceled anyway. So, yeah, I had an attitude about it.
Well, you're saying-
I spent a lot of money.
You're saying you never had no meetings, but I, I have to, I have to disagree, because we-
Tell me what, tell me what zoning board meetings we went to after both of those meetings. We had two meetings, that after those meetings was gonna go to the zoning board, and I've got it on tape, and it said, after this meeting, now we go to the zoning board to talk about it. Neither one of those meetings happened, and I've got it on tape, if you'd like to see them.
Well, you're talking about all the other meetings that didn't happen, and, you know, I, we, they did happen.
What meetings didn't happen?
With the, uh, city attorney, or the city administrator, and the city attorney, and I believe staff had meetings?
Yes, we did. Ryan, uh, yeah, and, well, only you were there.
Well, I mean, you said you did have the meetings.
And so was Yolanda. And we sat down and tried to put something together, and again, my, my CUP was canceled anyway. There was never any negotiations from the standpoint that was ever voted on that we talked about. They just canceled the CUP.
Your, your CUP was canceled October, in October.
Correct.
And we, we, we in July could've pulled your permit then, and we didn't do it. We said, we're gonna give you till October 1st to work this out. You know, how can-
And that's what I said, that didn't happen.
I got a question for you. Do you, if you, if nothing was happening, and this is your livelihood, yeah, if I, you run your business how you want, but if it was been me, I would've been down here every single day trying to figure out what is going on, and why, why we're not getting this done.
Like I said, tell me when these two meetings happened with the zoning board. We had two meetings with Citizens Advisory people, and they made suggestions to go to the zoning board. Neither one of those happened.
Well, if you had to, if you had to-
All right, Alderman Johnson.
Um, can we stop this dialogue? I mean, it's beating a dead horse, it has no further proceeding, it's all agreement. We've, we've got a CUP on the table, and let's get on with that. Let's not go, go back to past history.
Mayor, my point that I'm trying to get to is, we, we've spent a lot of taxpayers' money, and we didn't, we didn't need to. This could've been handled earlier, I feel. And to sit here and, and, and say that it could not have been handled earlier, it, it, there's no reason why it couldn't have. And, you know, when- And to sit here and, and, and say that it could not have been handled earlier, it, it, there's no reason why it couldn't have. And, you know, what really got me upset is, I, I get this email that you sent to your sound guy and I'll be glad to pass it out. And I'll give you one, you pass that down to Alvin. You know, after, would you hand that to Mister Shroud, please? You know, after all the time and money we spent and, and just our, our time alone, I, I read this and it says, "We will keep you posted, we are having a meeting Wednesday night to talk about the direction the city is going. We are looking to replace all elected officials and staff." They, that, what, what is, I mean, is that really showing you're working with this? I mean, we've put a lot of time and effort into this and, and you, you want to replace us all?
Well, you're saying, I did put a lot of time and effort into it too. And we can sit here and argue about this all night if you like, I mean-
Well, you know, we're, we're elected by our, our residents to watch our taxpayers. And we also need to work with businesses to keep our, to keep our businesses in town.
I agree.
But when, but when I, when I read this, that you're trying to eliminate our staff and our board members, that tells me right there, you had no intention of working with us.
There was one staff we were talking about eliminating and she's gone.
Uh, it says, it says, "We are looking to replace all elected officials and staff." All staff.
I know, it's the same.
It says, elected officials and staff. And, and then you, then you come up here and you want me to vote twice tonight so you can open your track? This tells me you make no effort to, to even try to open your track. And why, and why did you-
Well, appoint those two meetings, you're talking about what I did and I'm talking about what you did. We had two meetings where the citizens got up and had a chance to talk and at both of those meetings, it said, now we're going to go to the zoning board and try to come up with compromise. Neither one of those meetings happened.
So, why, why didn't you step, why didn't you come to one of the meetings and say, uh, why haven't we went to the zoning board?
I did, I come up, you told me I was stonewalling you guys and I said, I'm not stonewalling anybody, I'm waiting for the board of zoning meetings to-
Well, that's why, that's why, that's why I go back and say, why didn't you pick up the phone and go, what's going on?
Well, at that point, nothing was going on anywhere, so I-
Why, why didn't you, why didn't you make an effort?
I was talking to the records, to be quite honest with you.
I mean, it, I, like I said, if, if it's my business, you run yours how you want, I would have been up here every day till I got, got it done and, and opened. And then you, then you waited till January to come in front of planning and zoning. What, why such a, the big opening?
The meeting was two weeks late because whenever Ken and I sat down to set a date, we had the wrong date, so that put us off two weeks there. We had, on the wrong night, so we had to push everything back two weeks. It was just a mistake on our part when the next city council meeting was set.
Alvin Scully.
Uh, looking into the CUP, we talked about where we're going to do the sound test, you know, give a GPS reading and everything. Nothing was said that the city could do it, but their sound meter or, or anything. I talked to Ken the other day and we both assumed that's supposed to be there, but as far as I know, that's not wrote down. Uh, and that was one of the problems before, no, you know, it was always, we get third party or this or that. I just think that if the city spent the money for that equipment, that they should be able to use their equipment and our staff to do the test if they have to.
Yeah, I think we tried to touch on that a little bit. I think one of the reasons it doesn't specifically say whether it's going to be us, or it doesn't say that it's going to be us, is it does leave the option open if we wanted to have somebody else do the test. But, one of the, the points that Mayor Todd brought up last time was having the exact coordinates there. And then we've got the method of how we're going to do it, using that three-minute LEQ. So, no matter who's doing the test, we know the spot and we know the method. So, in theory, it shouldn't make a difference, you know, who's doing it, whether it's us, whether it's Mister Shroud. And that's kind of where we were going with, uh, nine E on the sound. Um, with the, uh, violation provision there to where if we go out and we get readings that are over, we notify them and we basically have, uh, a, a hearing within ten days saying, you know, he, he wasn't in, wasn't meeting the standards that are in the permit. And then he would have the opportunity to say, well, to basically argue his case to, uh, make sure that we have due process there. But I think we, it, it doesn't say staff's going to do it, but I think overall, we have the, um, we have what we need in there to where there's no question about how to do it.
Are you okay with that, Jim?
Well, having, having been down the road last July, trying to enforce what we had in place and, uh, recognizing the difficulty of enforcement moving forward, I would suggest that we would consider specific language. That the city is going to be the one monitoring the test. If the city wants to hire someone, that doesn't change the wording. But, we, if there's a violation, every issue on sound, I don't want to go back and forth, I don't want to have something in the inventory. That was what it was agreed, everybody knew it going in. We have the equipment, we have the people who take the tests, I would prefer it be clear.
Cause, wasn't there even question at one point about the height at which the measurements were taken?
I don't have problems.
I, I thought, I thought it came up once, didn't it like, you had to be specific, if, if you're higher in the air, it could be different if you're ground level.
I think he was using extremes, I think he made the point, you know, if you're at ground level, it's one thing, if you're a hundred feet in the air, it's probably something different. But I don't think it, you know, whether it's at three foot or six foot, I don't think that's what he was getting at.
So, we need to tie that-
I propose that we change amendment to read, um, the sound readings will be taken at the prescribed location by the city or someone of their choosing.
Okay, I have a motion from Alvin, uh, Johnston to add the provision that the, uh, testing will be done by someone with the city or someone of the city's choosing. Third second.
Second.
Second Alvin Scully. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, uh, pick a vote on a motion then, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alright, so you have that amended in there, Ken?
Yes.
So, the sound is the same condition, the, the remaining for the, the conditions are the same, I want to make sure.
I propose that we may bring us for second, first and second reading tonight.
Do we do that after the first? Make, make that motion now or after the first reading?
After the first reading.
Okay, so after the first reading.
I, I'm still in discussion.
Okay, I know, we haven't voted yet.
Yeah, Mister Shroud, I got one more for you. You know, we, we tried working you, with you on, on seeing how we could get this done, if it could get done. Cause a lot of people lose out, race fans. So, we set up a meeting, a special meeting with you, with the sound guy to come in. That Monday, I go to my mailbox and I have a lawsuit and every person on this board has a lawsuit. You, you told me that you had to do that, but nowhere did you ever make an effort to contact any of us and say, look, I have to do this lawsuit on this day. But I'd like to move the meeting up so we can discuss this and maybe work this out. Why, why, why did you let that happen like that?
You have to ask my attorney, I mean, I had an attorney, he was in contact with Mister Cook. I mean, we waited till the last day to see if there was going to be a compromise coming forward and one never came forward. So, that was the last day we had to do it.
So, you-
I can't believe that you would be irritated that I would file a lawsuit for you for losing my business. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but you know-
Well, you, you weren't following your CUP at sixty-five dBs. You weren't, you weren't following your, your CUP at sixty-five dBs that you signed the contract for. And we-
I never signed the contract or anything.
And, and we waited and tried working with you and that's why in July, we said enough's enough, we're going to pull your CUP October first.
Would you like to see the meetings that we had with the citizens advisory people that said we would, I mean, nothing ever happened like it's supposed to. You know, the mayor asked Mister Cook during this whole process, if we can come up to an agreement prior to canceling the CUP, can we still do this? Mister Cook said, yes, we can. And we had a proposal that didn't go anywhere, I mean, and I, I-
Well, I'm still-
You can argue that we've had months and months and we've had all the public hearings and stuff and I guess if we wanted to argue about this, we should have done it in public hearings where everybody, everybody could have had it.
Well, I was just, I, I, I've just been thinking about this and thinking about it and, and you know, I, I come, I come across this, this email and I read that and I'm like, I just wasted all my time trying to work with a business owner. I've said it, I've said it a hundred times, we, we should work with every business owner in this town.
I agree.
To keep every business we can, any way, shape or form, open. But, when, when a business owner goes out and sends an email out that says, we're, we're working on replacing all elected officials to the staff, how do you, how would that hit you?
Somebody caught you, if somebody got you fired out of your job, told you you had to move out of your house and couldn't live in it, but you still had to keep making your house payments and paying your property tax, how would you feel?
Well, if it been me, I, like you said, I would have been down at city hall working on this a lot harder than what I would do, than the way you were doing it, instead of waiting till January to come in front of planning and zoning.
We have meetings after meetings after meetings that went down.
Now you want to do this two reads in one night.
And you're just, you're just wanting to, if you want to rub my nose in it to show me you don't have to, is that what you're trying to say?
No, I, I, I'm upset that taxpayers' money was wasted.
I'm upset too, I spent as much money as you did, I'm upset too.
You didn't have to, Mister Shroud, we came, we sat down and said we could just-
Show me where we went to the planning commission after two meetings.
I, I, I'm done, I'm done, Mister Shroud, thank you, thank you for, thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you.
I understand there were issues from your side or issues from our side. We've worked through a lot of things, there's been a lot of emotions.
I agree, I showed, you guys have shown a lot of consideration in the last few months and I thanked all of you for it, so.
I'm happy that we've got to the point tonight where we can get to this decision and keep things going for you. And, uh, I'm hoping from this point forward, that you will come to the board and talk with us and work with us so that we can get ahead of these issues before we ever get in the situation we was before.
I think with the CUP and what Ken and everybody's done, wherever we sat down with Mister Scully and Yolanda and the things they've got put in place where it won't get to this level, I think there's, there's things in this that will stop it from happening or if there's an issue that we have to sit down and work on. So, I don't have a problem with that. And again, the last two or three months of the zoning board and what I've heard here has been a sense of cooperation.
And I, I just want to make sure that we end on that note, that we're going to continue on that path of cooperation so we can work together and keep, keep things going and invest in the community and your business.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Just so the record's clear, I actually agree with the change that we're going to put into there.
Yes.
I mean, I know we talked about the principal idea, but I would suggest that in section three of section A, uh, we have, make the first, we have this, this entry that the sound level will be measured by the city or its designated by three-minute weighted average LEQ measured at latitude. Let's stop there for now.
Okay.
That's, we will just insert that, the city or its designated.
Yeah, I think that's the motion that Alvin Johnston made, okay.
I do have one, I, I have one question here, I mean, answer quickly, cause I did have a phone call about this and I didn't quite know how to answer it for sure, but we've talked about the quietest cars running last. For my clarification, is, I guess, is it reverse order where let's say you're running B-mod streets, uh, dirt demons and mod lights at night? Is it reverse order where the features are B-mod first, then I guess streets, demons and mod lights?
We usually run, the, the, the feature class will usually be the next to the last class to run. Unless we're running over on time. So, the reason we put those, we, we drop, we drop the decimal reading at ten o'clock down to eighty.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, I have the option to where if I need to run two classes last, I can do one class. I just, it's a time management issue from my standpoint to where that, once it goes down to eighty decimal, I need to make sure I've got my quietest cars on the next race.
I just need clarification.
Other than that, to keep track, that once we hit the ten o'clock, uh, timeframe, we have to drop the meeting and the louder cars can't meet us. So, we, we'll make sure that we're done with this.
Do you have anything else?
I guess, I guess, I got something else. You know, I, I, uh, I gotta sit here and I gotta decide on what I'm going to vote on this racetrack. I'm still don't, right now, don't know where I'm at. I, I'll be honest with you, Mister Shroud, I, I don't trust you, you lied under oath.
I don't trust you either.
You lied under oath in here.
How do you figure I lied under oath?
Same as you, we got it under video.
I'd like to see it then, if you're going to make accusations, we all know what they are.
There's no accusations you made, it, it's Mister Cook presented you with the letter and you said you didn't, your attorneys or you didn't get it and he showed you that you did get it and then you, so, that's under oath.
That's what, that's what my attorney told me and I think that night we worked it out, we found out that we did have a mistake in it. So, you just sit up there and call me a liar, I take offense to that, to be quite honest with you.
Right.
We worked out that, it may have been a misinterpretation on my part and we worked it out and in fact, he found his information and it was clarified that night. So, we didn't leave the room that night with any misconception of what was going on.
Well, I, I was with the, I was with the understanding that you were lying under oath. Cause you said you didn't get it and he proved that you did.
Didn't we stop that meeting and pull those papers out?
Damn, that, after you, after you, after you kept saying you didn't get it, you didn't have it, you didn't have it.
But didn't we, didn't we work it out that night?
I'm, I'm not going to go any further, I just, I've got to figure out, the bad part is, I've got-
I take offense to you calling me a liar, I'll tell you that right now.
I got race fans that, that want to go to the track and because of the way you've done this, I, I don't know what, how to think.
Okay. Alright, anyone else have anything? Okay, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
You roll call it.
Please do. Johnston?
Yes.
Shaffer?
No.
Scully?
Yeah.
Hedley?
No.
West? Arnold?
Yes.
Four-two.
Oh, no, no, second.
Four-two first.
I'd like to propose a motion, we do a double read tonight.
I have a motion from Alvin Johnston to read, uh, bill fifteen dash zero-six, right now, for its second reading tonight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin West, any discussion?
Yeah, there is no one here tonight that, everyone knew about this meeting, there doesn't seem to be anyone here in opposition to it, they didn't come up with a specific comment. I can see no reading in Mister Lane, Mister Shroud anymore than, you know, let's get this thing done and get it put away.
Well, I tell you, I, I do have an issue reading it twice tonight, just because I, I don't have an issue-
That's fine, that's fine, you're not voting on it.
I know, I don't, I don't have an issue with it, as doing a special meeting before race season starts. But I think you need to give an opportunity in case someone does. I mean, I don't have an issue, I don't have an issue adding a meeting to do a second reading before race season. But I don't think we should read it twice tonight. That's just my reason.
I, I agree, I, while there has been a number, you know, time over, I would like to give our citizens one last chance to, well, now that they see how the voters come down to bring any concerns or whatever in. Uh, so, I, I see a need to have a special meeting, cause we want to, want to be able to meet, uh, so that you can get the season started and get through the process. But I, I think tonight, if we, uh, voted twice on it tonight, it would, uh, be short, given our citizens an opportunity to, to speak.
It won't be a public hearing again, will it? I mean, the public hearing's over, is that correct?
No, it, it would, it would just be off, it would just be off for a second. And we could do it, I'm assuming, next Monday, thirtieth. So, we do have a, a motion of seconds, so do you have anything else on a motion to double read tonight? Okay, all in favor of double read tonight, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Is it, uh, six, four-two?
Two, two, four, yeah.
Four-two.
Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we have a special meeting next Monday to get this thing resolved.
I have a motion from Alvin Johnston to, uh, place a special meeting on the agenda for the thirtieth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Arnold, any discussion, under court that night?
No, I just think they're who voted on the first thing.
Oh.
That's why I'm trying to catch up, sorry.
Mayor, any discussion?
Mayor, on discussion?
Well, first of all, is there court next Monday?
No, sir.
Okay, so we can use this room then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make that straight first, huh?
I, I feel that he's had plenty of time to bring this to the board in the past. There's no reason for this board to take taxpayers' money and have a special meeting just for him. I, no. Enough of taxpayers' money's been wasted on, on this, and I don't believe we need to have a special meeting for Mr. Shroud. He's had, had a good time to, to come to this board.
Any additional discussion?
All right. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Four-two now the other way.
So this is the vote on the special.
That's the vote on the second reading.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaver?
No.
Scully?
Yes.
Henley?
No.
West?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Four-two. Passes.
Okay. Move on to the next slide.
This is bill B fifteen dash zero seven, first reading, ordinance pending chapter four hundred, section four hundred point four six zero, E F I, the code of ordinance of City of Green Valley, Missouri. First reading, bill B fifteen dash zero seven, one reading.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill number B fifteen oh seven for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
All right, folks from Alvin Jefferson. Through bill B fifteen dash zero seven for its first reading, bring it back by title one for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alvin Henley.
Any discussion?
Well, we've already talked about, I, I think we need to put a limit on how many car lots we're gonna allow on, on Main Street. I mean, the other part I agree with, but we, I think we need to look at that.
If you're gonna be making changes to that, then you go back to P and D though, because that's not what they, since our way, correct?
We would modify the vote similar, it would be the same as limiting the payday off of, uh, what we're gonna do for payday loans. So if, my understanding is it would have to go back through the entire process.
Sounds like we need to go ahead and handle this the way it is and advise the planning and zoning to research that issue about the number of lots so they can bring something, their recommendation back to us on that.
So go ahead and, we're wanting to approve it this way and then add this all to it?
What do you per, I didn't, I didn't hear you, Alvin and Arnold, what did you propose?
This one, leave this in as it is and go ahead and approve it as presented, but go have, have the planning and zoning go back in and research your question about, you know, the ways and needs, because I think that's gonna be a fairly deep subject about, you know, how, how they're gonna be able to do that without having a lawyers involved, you know, it's, it's gonna be a very deep subject. So it needs to be looked at on its own to, to make sure that they do the best they can and not confuse, confuse it with these other issues. I know we have businesses that are being affected by this order. If we hold it up at this point, we wouldn't be able to, you know, it would be holding those businesses up, so.
Well, how, how would that, how would that take place if we go ahead and pass this, then doesn't that, I mean, pass, open it up with car lots and start coming in and?
If you pass this, yeah, you, you would allow the car lots in there. That's, that's my understanding that we probably have two to three car lots ready to go as soon as we pass this.
That, that'd be my worry.
Yeah, one thing I, I guess I had a question on. Is it possible just to limit that area or do you have to limit or put a, is it possible just to limit that area or do you have to limit or put a, change the language, I guess, in the code for, uh, that automobile rental repair? Because there's quite a few things that are tied into that one thing, whether it's a car wash or, uh, taxi facility, and there's quite a few things that are there. And I guess that was my question earlier. I'm not sure that we can just say in that little strip of the overlay district that you can only have, you know, five car lots. Is that, I guess my, my gut is saying it would have to be a larger scale. In looking at like the payday loan, uh, case, that's gonna be a citywide thing. That's not gonna be a, just this little corner or just this strip. I don't know if that makes sense, but I guess that's kinda where my question would come in.
I mean, I guess my concern is, I don't know how we can alleviate it, is we could possibly have car lots from the railroad tracks all the way down to Eagles Parkway, on both sides of the street almost. That's kinda what we're looking at perhaps, and I mean, I don't know if that's, well, we're wondering, I mean, if that's what we want, then that's fine, but I don't know if that's what we want or not.
I, I, I don't think it's gonna happen. I mean, it's gonna be supply and demand, you know, there's not that many people here buying cars that are gonna build down the car lots. If people have a lot there and they wanna put a car lot there, their business, they can bring business into the city. I don't think we should hinder them.
I think we need to be very careful that we don't end up with, with another overlay district that's different than any other area in Green Valley. I mean, I, I think that there is considerable discussion that needs to happen. I mean, how, how this is handled, otherwise we're gonna be right back where we were to begin with. Overlay district that was totally different than any other area in Green Valley. So just wanna caution everybody, we don't wanna end up in that same situation again.
And I, I agree completely. So why should we restrict what's gonna happen on Main Street and not restrict what's gonna happen on Double A or what's north of Main Street or anything else? I, you know, if they, if they decide to put car lots down there and they're business and they're viable and they could bring, you know, business to come out of them, I don't think we should restrict them.
Mr. Mayor, since we have a question about whether it is legal to restrict in, in the overlay district, um, my recommendation is that you go ahead and move forward with the vote tonight and, uh, let staff find out, talk to legal, find out if it is, uh, legal to restrict car lots. Bring that information back. You most likely, I, I think, what Ken tried to say is we probably wanna move forward with this, this section right here just because of the research and the amount of time that it's gonna take, we barely determine how many car lots can be in the entire city, and it's not, I don't think we're gonna be able to have turned around by, certainly not April, most likely not May. So I think with, if, planning and zoning are recommending this, uh, if, if you call for a vote for it this evening and then let us find out in the meantime if there is any additional research and bring that information back to the, to the board, to the next board, we'll make that probably be the most prudent way to approach.
Anyone else have anything on this?
Seeing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six-zero first. All right, we have resolutions for appointments to the Green Valley Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. There are three. They are resolutions, numbers are fifteen seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. And they are resolutions, and I'll read together. Resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, Missouri, appointing Eddie Sappel, Kelly Smith, Todd Farley as the Chamber of Commerce representative to the Board of, to the Green Valley Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Whereas the Board of Alderman, Green Valley is dedicated to the constant improvement of our community by enlisting the assistance of qualified participants. Whereas the Green Valley Economic Development Corporation bylaws were adopted by the Board of Directors, signed by the President, March twelve, two thousand nine, revised March nine, two thousand fifteen. Whereas the Green Valley Economic Development Corporation was formed for the purpose of promoting aesthetic, historic, cultural, artistic, recreational and civic aspects of the community, contributing to the overall quality of life of the citizens. Whereas Eddie Sappel, Kelly Smith, Todd Farley are qualified delegates in the City of Green Valley and desire to serve the community by participating on the Green Valley Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Whereas the Mayor, Mayor of Green Valley, Mike Todd, wishes to appoint Eddie Sappel, Todd Farley and Kelly Smith to the Green Valley Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. It was all by the Board of Alderman. The Board of Alderman confirms the appointment by the Mayor of Eddie Sappel, Todd Farley and Kelly Smith as representatives on the Green Valley Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Passed this twenty-third day of March, two thousand fifteen.
Mayor, I move that we accept resolutions fifteen dash seventeen, fifteen dash eighteen and fifteen dash nineteen, as read.
I got a motion from Alvin Heather to approve resolutions R fifteen dash seventeen, dash eighteen, dash nineteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alvin Scully. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Resolution, uh, R fifteen dash twenty, resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, authorizing the city administrators enter into agreement with Wheeler Lawn and Landscaping LLC for maintenance services. Whereas Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, desires to have professional maintenance, mowing, job traction, tree removal services as needed from city codes violating. Whereas Wheeler Lawn and Landscaping LLC has the ability to provide these services within a guaranteed timeframe of forty hours. Whereas the city desires to use Wheeler Lawn and Landscaping LLC to perform maintenance services as contractual outlined, to provide a high level of service to the residents, business owners and visitors of Green Valley. Now therefore, due to resolve by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, the city administrator is hereby authorized to enter into agreement with Wheeler Lawn and Landscaping LLC for maintenance services. Passed this twenty-third day of March, two thousand fifteen.
A resolution by, I'm sorry, I'm still, still on the last. All right, I move that we accept resolution number B, uh, fifteen, B fifteen, R fifteen twenty, as read.
I have a motion from Alvin Jefferson to approve resolution R fifteen dash twenty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alvin Henley. Any discussion?
Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Next slide, the city attorney report? Next slide, the city administrator and staff report?
Um, I just wanna let the board know and the mayor that the auditors are on site and will be here this week and most of next week.
Mayor and board, I've left you, uh, copies of two upcoming events sponsored by the police department. This Saturday, we'll have the very first attempt to do Coffee with the Cop. This program's been successful around the country and other cities, and it's a great way to, uh, to, uh, enhance, uh, communication and dialogue between citizens and, uh, the police in kind of a social manner. And basically just sit there and chat. We will yield, we will, we'll listen to their concerns or complaints and, uh, dispel rumors, which I think is important, and, uh, um, we're kind of happy that the Hot Pods Cafe has, uh, decided to support it, so we'll make it clear that we are not picking up the tab for seventy-five people that come in and eat breakfast though. We'll have to set the ground rules early. I'm sorry? Next Saturday, I'm sorry, the fourth of April. And then, uh, we'll do our third annual shredding event, which we combine with a prescription drug disposal drop-off, and this has been increasingly very popular with the community the last two years, and we'll do that on Saturday morning, May second, out here in the, the lot. We've contracted with, uh, the shredded company who do a very good job of secure shredding, and we'll have stations set up and citizens, uh, of Green Valley or anybody employed within Green Valley can pull up, and we'll have our volunteers and officers out here. They can drop off any prescription drugs that will be, uh, um, destroyed, and then they can pull further down and drop off up to three boxes of documents or anything they want shredded. And we're, uh, hoping that's as accessible this year. We've been, uh, very pleased to have the support of our two banks here in town who both, uh, help, uh, finance the, uh, cost of the truck. So that's been very good. Bank of Green Valley and the state bank, we appreciate their, their support. That's all.
Okay. Next up, the Board of Alderman reports and comments. Alvin Arnold.
Uh, I don't know if Mr. Cook was wherever we'd asked for some, some clearance and, uh, education on the park board and how, what their authorities are and what our authorities are and how those two mingle. And, and how the statute sets how we're supposed to work together. Looking for you all to come back with some education to us and how that's supposed to work.
All right. Did you hear the question?
No, sir.
The question is to clarify how the board works with the park board under the statutory authority, um, which creates the park board, which gives the park board its authority to work, and how it works either as an advisory or a standalone decision maker. I think that's what.
Yeah, because over the years I've been told they're an autonomous board. They have their authority to do what they're gonna do, and then I've been told it's a little less that, and they're just an advisory board. And so I think, you know, an education to the board as well as the park board would go long, a long ways to just clarify exactly where we all stand, what, what the process is.
And, uh, probably the best way to handle that, with your permission, is just to prepare a short memo just outlining, kinda historically where we are, what the statute provides for park board, how we've operated and how the two go together. And I can have that ready for you the next board meeting, like, maybe not Monday, the first board meeting in April. Shannon?
That's it. Alvin West?
Nothing at this time, man.
Alvin Henley?
Nothing at this time.
Alvin Scully?
Uh, last Thursday, I went to the school board meeting. Uh, Dr. Moss had, was not there, had a death in the family. Uh, uh, but on a good note, as they recognized three young men that went through state wrestling, a twenty-year program, uh, they finally had their very first state champion, so. It was a good night on that note.
Alvin Schaefer?
Uh, just a couple things. Um, Ken, Ryan, I, I don't know what's happened to Shorthorn towards the bottom, um, you know, Cross Creek, but, uh, once you get to the stop sign on Shorthorn and, and, uh, you're going to Cross Creek, I, I'm assuming it's the, uh, sewer lines have settled through there. It's, because it's, it's pretty, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? It stays the same, feet apart all the way through there, down to the bottom of the hill, and it's just got really, really bad here this year. I, I, you know, I never noticed it last year, but this year it's, it's, it's pretty rough. Um, I don't know if you've been out there lately or not.
Have you found my cracks in the road or what?
No, it's, it's the sewer lines. I'm assuming it's the sewer lines have settled based on how they're separated, you know, where you cross the road and the sewer lines. I don't know why these all of a sudden got so bad, but, uh, this, they're really, really bad. Um, the only other thing I'd like to know is, uh, Shannon, how's baseball going?
Um, it's great. We, uh, like I said, we concluded registrations on March seventh, and we had our coaches' meetings for baseball two weeks ago. Past week was softball and T-ball, coaches' meetings wrapped up this past Wednesday. And so right now it's kinda the stage where the coaches are contacting parents and letting them know who they are and their practices are and kinda starting the uniform ordering process.
I, I had a couple, uh, at the Taste of the World, had, uh, two, three parents that were concerned that they, they thought we were behind, uh, in getting the program going compared to prior years with, with another organization they were with.
No, I mean, last year in the spring, I think the registration deadline was March fifteenth, um, so it was actually a week, about a week later than what ours was. Uh, overall, they had their coaches' meeting this past Friday. The rest is, uh, wraps up the end of this month, um, so we're, we're right on, on schedule.
You're on schedule.
Sooner than most communities around us.
All right, thank you, Ken.
Alvin Johnson?
You just said, I'd like to say that ordinance I proposed on, uh, um, Yeah, just said, I'd like to stay at ordinance, I proposed on, uh, um, residency requirement for senior staff.
Actually, yeah, I'm sorry.
I was hoping that would be on entrance meeting.
Yes, it will be. I got the draft up, I had theory last Friday. It's too late to include in the, it's all worked out, we'll take a look at it next week.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up, the mayor's report. Uh, just a couple things. Uh, I kinda mentioned these a little bit, Shannon, but I had some concerns about lack of benches at the park.
Yeah, I did follow up with our, uh, park maintenance superintendent on that, and we currently, there are four benches that are not in the park, that are currently being converted.
Okay, so we have four, we have four that'll be going back out there?
Yeah, really quick, yep.
After we get those four, we might, I don't know, you might try to do an inventory and see, maybe that's something we need to budget for next year's add-in anymore or not. I don't know what the scene looks like out there, but, I guess especially in the high traffic areas around the playground equipment and stuff.
Right.
Let's see what's there. Uh, next thing I had then is, uh, and I talked to Kalila about this, Jamie, but you might wanna work on this also. Uh, May is, uh, melanoma awareness month, and I'm sure there's probably a, uh, resolution that we can copy off of for that reckon, or, you know, approximation resolution recognizing that.
Proclamation or resolution?
Either one, I don't care, whatever's easier. And do that, just recognizing that that's, you know, the month. Contrary to what Kalila thought, notice does not mean you go out and get in the sun and get sunlight, it's to prevent it from seeing cancer. So, she thought, oh, does that mean you get the, the vitamin, comes with the sun, I don't know, D, I think. Uh, the next thing, uh, and I don't know if this will be you, Ryan, or what, but, you know, occasionally I have, uh, board members contact me wanting to do proclamations for citizens, and, you know, different organizations and stuff like that. Maybe if we could come up with some kind of standard application process for that, so if someone has, someone they wanna recognize, or whatever, that, you know, the two proper channels, have an application to fill out for that. Is that something you think you can tackle, or delegate to somebody else to tackle?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Uh, the final thing I have is, received a letter from, uh, Bill Steller, and I'll just read it here. It's from the Commissioning Committee on the USS Missouri. Uh, it says, "Dear Council, on behalf of the commanding officer in the USS Missouri Commissioning Committee, I would like to make you an opportunity for your city, along with the state's namesake submarine, the USS Missouri. In case you're not aware, this city of Missouri has a submarine named after it. The force ship of the line to bear the name Missouri, has fouled ship Missouri rest in anchor in Pearl Harbor. The submarine Missouri now carries on the fine tradition set forth by those previous ships named Missouri. The USS Missouri submarine has a new commanding officer, Commander F. T. Hudson. And to strengthen the ties between the state and the submarine, they are asking for city councils in Missouri to forward your city's flag to the submarine, which will in turn be flown while the submarine heads out to sea, and upon return to ports. The crew will sign your flag and send it back to you with a certificate signed by the captain, as to what date it flew on the ship, so you may display it, uh, display it properly." Something goes off, and was interested to give some of the, uh, uh, specs from the USS Missouri. So, if everyone is on agreement on that, we will send one of our city flags to them, and they can fly it over the sub and get it back to us, and might be something we can frame and display here when we get it back. So, if everyone's okay with that, well, I'm assuming we have a flag we can send them, right?
We'll have Shannon send one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, we have, you have, you have the address, I'll give this back to you. All right, uh, that is all I have. Uh, and we do have a need for an executive session for legal actions.
And real estate, man.
And real estate. So, I will entertain a motion then to adjourn the executive session for legal actions and real estate.
So moved.
Motion from Almond Headley, do I have a second?
I got a second.
Second, Almond Arnold. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Almond Arnold?
Yes.
Almond West?
Yes.
Almond Headley?